Thank you, Michelle. Well, welcome. So today is July. And this is the business meeting of the Little Smithfield Township Supervisors for Thursday, July 11. We'll also be having a plaque presentation. Russ, I see you back there. Good to see you for our Person of the Year. And we have a presentation on I-80 from Tara. And of course, the staff will be giving their mid-year presentation. So we'll start. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. And we will have a few things moved around. And at that time, I'll make a motion to move the items on the agenda for a different order. Any comments or questions? All in favor? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 27.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Pat, could we please have a report of the executive session?
Sure, the board briefly before a meeting this evening discussed some pending real estate and litigation items. No decisions were made. No votes taken.
Thank you. And now that'll bring us to public comment on non-agenda items. I hope everybody's summary is going well. Tara, if you're up.
Good evening. My name is Tara Zanai, as we all know. I am a Noel County resident and today I'm here wearing the hat of Noel County, Harvard Township, Little Mount Ethel Township, Upper Mount Ethel Township, Smithfield Township, and Portland, Garm. I am round zeros. Liaison right now to PennDOT and DOT for matters that relate to Interstate 80 and 611 and Delaware Gap. We did that because Mayor Del Sars and Kevin Duffy had come over here in 2018. And really to all the Pennsylvania municipalities and let you guys know of the impending doom. That could happen if we didn't collectively come together and take some actions to help the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Get more studies. Get some questions answered about the Rockfall mitigation project. And as we started, my husband and I started assisting the townships in 2019 because of his technical experience with civil work. As those mayors departed and retired, our townships decided it would be beneficial to appoint us. Therefore, we can be at the meetings and ask the questions that we know to ask and keep the record. So instead of just recording tonight as the I-80DWG Coalition, I now wear that hat. Now that I took up to me enough on that, this is going to be very brief because I'm moving out a big agenda, but I did want to give you
There was a fine risk to share a screen.
Thank you for trying. I didn't intend for it to be a big presentation tonight. I knew I really only wanted to take a few moments. So specifically, the agenda says I-80 Delaware Gap corridor study, Rockfall mitigation, and retaining wall we have in replacement. So everything we had going on on 80, the Rockfall mitigation project, we now have going on on 611, which is part of the reason we started screaming about this when the DOT was talking about 80. There was no way we're going to have construction on 80 without affecting 611. And if we're affecting 611, we all know that that's where there are known rocks, where there's not a whole lot of that on 80, and trees and other things. So we have mirror projects. So now we have Rockfall mitigation on 80 and 611. In addition, we brought to the New Jersey Department of Transportation's attention the fact that the I-80 retaining wall could use a little work, like it was critical. So excellent, thank you. So that's the not so good news. Is that both retaining walls on 611 and 80 are structurally not sound. They need work. And both slopes could use Rockfall mitigation. We're not against Rockfall mitigation, but we want it to be well-studied and appropriate to the true safety situation that's there. So that's the not so good news, not so good news. And that we now do have one whole project upon us. They will be going into preliminary engineering in 2025. And that's actually good news. We successfully, I believe, Smithfield Township took action and encouraged your Northeastern Pennsylvania Alliance, your MPO, to prioritize an existing study, excuse me, an existing project that was in the tip. But it was a low priority and it was a future date. So since it was in the tip, which is replacing and repairing their retaining wall, we said, let's go ahead and take action and encourage them to prioritize that now. Maybe they were going to do it anyway. We don't know. But we put some noise on it and they did. And what's happening now is instead of that being out there, a future date that they'll get to it, it is now scheduled for preliminary engineering in 2025. And that's great news because they're definitely, once they resolve the special use permit and everything going on to deal with just scraping down the biggest hazards that are there now to maybe open one lane. Once they're done with phase one, which is the negotiations between PennDOT and the National Park Service that are being coordinated by Public Park Act, once they get that done, they are going to then do Rockfall mitigation, address the rest of the slope because of what happened. It was unavoidable. It was inevitable. So since that was going to happen, from our perspective, another worse thing that could happen is they do that, take a year or so, whatever, and then they get around to doing the wall, the retaining wall. Well, why not do things smart once? Maybe do it at the same time so that there's less impact to the public. So that did happen. It is funded. It is going to preliminary engineering in 2025. It's about to be funded. It's in the draft. The other great thing is Smithfield Township asked for was, and I had approached NEPA Alliance about this. I said to them, you know, we have the whole corridor crisis. And what happened on 611 affects 80. What happens on 80 affects 611. We need a full corridor study. I was here talking to you guys about that last time, creatively finding ways to get that. I said to them, your section, the Monroe County section failed first. Don't you get to be wise and respond to the public and study your segment of this crisis area first? And that was in Smithfield Township's resolution and that has been, that's approved. So that is going to happen. That's the other good news of the night. That is going to happen. A part of preliminary engineering, that's going to happen from 2025 to 2026. So I'm going to be, I'll be back about all this. Because the next bad thing that I want to avoid is if they're doing a transportation study on about 611 Point of Gap to the village Delaware Water Gap. It's, I'm going to be trying to get a collective supporting voice that that has to be a bigger study. Because in order, you know, your residents and your businesses are affected when 80 is closed, they're coming on 611. We all need six, all of 611. It should be a more comprehensive study. So I'll be back about that a little bit. So the second slide is really showing you, I have you to do this, thank you, is showing you the fact that there are the names of the projects on each side. So on 80, we have emergency retaining wall repairs right now. On 611, we have emergency slope stabilization. Hopefully going to start soon. Can D and PennDOT and the National Park Service. As I said, I-80, we have the Rockfall mitigation and the slope, excuse me, the wall on 611, we have two wall projects and the slope. So we are going to be continuing to take action to get the New Jersey to do their part of the study, which they have not been responsive at all. We're going to keep, we'll get away at that. And we have recently taken action to request Cortland's 611 section from Cortland to Point of Gap also has cracks and is creaking and has stabilization issues. So wouldn't it be horrible if we get all 611 Monroe County part done and then a year and a half later, they're closing the bottom part, Point of Gap to Cortland to get around to dealing with that section? Because I don't think a lot of traffic wants to be on this piece that I'm talking about. So that's, that's just a snapshot of where we are now. And I just wanted to give you guys a little update and let you know that there's a lot of other stuff that had that pretty interesting, more fun to talk about related to this in the works that I could talk about.
Well, did you want to come back to the to July 25th with love?
You know how long I have to walk? I'll put a pretty one up and we'll talk about some of those to get it going.
Thanks.
Yes.
Well, what can, what can we do to help?
Thank you for asking. Yeah, we're going to be back. I knew we were going to be back. We're letting the crisis of 611 sort itself out right now and the attention is on that. And but we are, that we are, I know we're going to be back about specific resolutions. I have to speak to that on 25.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions for Tara?
You'll be at the meeting July or August?
July.
July, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's a perfect time. It'll be about what I'll be talking about.
Okay.
On that, it'll be four o'clock or?
Yeah, it's 25 this call.
Right, you're going to get breathing. You'll get it first. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
I'm going to excuse myself.
Sure.
Thank you for always being here.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to announcements. I think Chris, Mike, you ready?
We just, we're talking about a few days, this Saturday. We hope the weather is good.
The current plan is that it will be on Saturday as scheduled.
Right. I, I think you'll find.
All right. So does the board prefer to do the treasures report or roll business first? All right, so I'll make a motion to move the treasures report up since we're changing the agenda.
Sure.
You're up, Mike. Comments, questions, all in favor?
Motion for a general count, $123,470. Does that make sense?
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion for a sure account, $67,722.12.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Seven.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
And working from our fire and any less tax, $154,750.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you, Bonnie, for getting that done. All right, so I'll make a motion now to move number 13, old business, up on the agenda. So that we can all be here for that. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Let me just stop sharing the screen. There you go. All right, terrific. So in front of the board is your packet. We have some business to clean up from the revitalized 209 grant applications that we have. So the value in, while we did go forward with the landscaping portion and we accrued that as a board, we still have some cleanup to do. There was some more that was applied for. And that would have been the lighting to make it dark sky compliant and also the landscaping. So if you take apart the two staple things, you'll come up to the value in application. And you'll see where they could also so apply for landscaping along 209 and replace the lighting that's visible along 209 with dark sky lighting.
And you'll access what's the values?
You can turn to page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in your packet and you'll see the landscaping was $1,000 $160. And the exterior lighting was $1,480. It's about $2,600.
So the total value, $2,600 for the grant is 13, 20?
No, the total of the grant is $19,000. Oh, it started out as $19,540, but we only did 25% for the roof.
Right.
We did that already. What's before you today is $1,160 plus $1,480.
Right, it's $2,640.
Oh, I thought you were saying $2,600.
So the grant is for 13?
Half of that, yes. So I would make a motion to approve that.
The, Michelle, what's the 25%? What's the number?
No, that was, the 25% of the roof.
What is that number? I want to make sure the total amount is?
Is under $20,000? It is.
The roofing was $4,225.
Okay. And that's based on that 16,9 number, 16,900. Yeah. And then the landscaping amount for $1,0160 and the lighting amount of $1,480, those are the two low bids or two low proposals from three of each. Okay.
There.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay. So then there is Ace Hardware. So when the boards discussed this application from Ace Hardware that they wanted to power wash and paint and all of that, the question was, the quote that they had chosen because they got multiple quotes, but there was one that was a few dollars higher. And they did submit something in writing as to why they wanted to go with the more expensive contractor, and it was because it would be less destructive to their business. So they would start earlier and the entire project would be finished sooner because they had more people and more staff to do it. So that sounds reasonable to me. You received, the board received the email with that. So I would make a motion to approve.
This is the Ace Hardware?
Yeah.
If the township, whatever the low proposal is, that's the extent of what the township is able to allocate.
Like there was lowest reasonable. If they're, we don't, we don't really award it all there. I mean, if there's a reason, you know, to go with a different bidder.
I would suggest at least not awarding more than 50% of the low proposal for purposes of the grant.
The difference.
It's talking about $805. So it's $402.50.
And that sounds reasonable to me. I mean, if they provided two different quotes and the reason for the difference in pricing was because the quality of the paint was different or it was different paint, we would be allowing for a better paint. So now the difference in the quote is better customer service. They're able to start before the store opened.
And they only have two quotes and they get three?
It looks like they tried.
It's not a time, Darren, Joe.
And I would always suggest ensuring that they have three quotes.
That's not always possible in this area. They made the attempt. Does anyone here have any trouble getting quotes from contractors? Or getting one to show up?
Well, I mean, this is well, I'm just amend the motions to say a maximum of 990, excuse me, 9,900. And then have James check in with them, see, because this is from June 24th, he couldn't get a quote. But James can check on it before, you know, bend the paper and see if he got the other quote. If it's less than, we can adjust. That there?
And what if they can't get the third?
No, no, then we go.
We're waiting. Now he's delayed another.
No, that's, no, I'm trying to avoid it.
When you say, say that, then?
That we would award up to
$19,800?
$9,900 based on the bids provided. However, it could be less if a third bid would receive impact.
I follow what you're saying, but I don't think what we needed to do yet. And that would be setting precedent in the now. I'm happy with the fact that he attempted to get these quotes. He got two. And they're reasonable.
I like to see the fact that, you know, as much as we don't think so, we're ready in the middle of July and the season is going to be gone. You know, in six weeks. You know, you're going to have to be painting PFC or a wood building, so.
So your motion is?
No, my motion, forget that all I said, my motion was the $9,900 to award for true value. For the lowest cost.
My motion was to award this.
Okay, so we'll start with yours and I'll make the second.
But what's the difference?
All right, let me start with mine.
Who made the first motion?
I did.
Okay, it's your motion.
Then you make.
You like to second it alphabetically?
I will, second me.
All right.
You're up. You didn't read.
All in favor?
Hi.
You said I loud.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Pat doesn't look very happy.
Oh, he's happy.
I'm fine. He's always happy.
That's right. Advising the band, that's what we always say.
Moving on to Auto Valley?
Moving on to Auto Valley. In your packets, you could see what this is for. It's to repair that little bit of the facade. The cost estimate was $2,500 and the grant request is $1,250. And everything is included in your packet and I would make that motion to approve that. And this is somebody else who also had difficulty getting.
Yeah, my same suggestion. I mean, this one actually looks like just one and they're saying the other two, too busy to take job, too busy to take job.
Because it's $2,500. So it's, it's this. See what it's for.
I didn't make a motion, Mike, do you want to second it?
No, I'm going to go.
I just talked with your neighbor. I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bye.
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 Oh, you said my last.
Okay, well, that was easy. I'm missing my buzzer button. Okay, so that brings us to the highlight, Russ Fisher and our plaque presentation. So Holly was very sorry that she couldn't be here tonight after organizing everything. And Russ, I mean, it looks like you're here by your, by yourself. So, but that's good. You are the Person of the Year for 2023 after all, so we would invite you to come up and you're welcome to speak about your organization. We have flyers out for each of the organizations. I mean, if you like, I can build up excitement to you by starting with those that are not here.
No excitement.
No? Okay. All right.
You know, on behalf of the Knights of Columbus and the Church of St. John, we do want to thank you all for the honors. Big deal. Also Valor, Valor, if you don't know who they are, they rescue homeless veterans. They started out mostly in Harbin County and now they all the way Trenton to Jesus, Pope Kyle, Berkeley, to Pittsburgh, and now they're trying to get into Ohio. They have rescued thousands, fed thousands. And we are proud to be a part of that. I'm glad that you guys recognize them because they are really a wonderful organization. And they just picked up a really nice piece of land if you didn't care.
We did?
Yeah, so it's good news for them all around the town. So we're just happy to help. And we're going to be expanding, so it's nice. And we're doing the Western Church with a couple of them.
Well, could you talk about that for a moment, your expansion?
Well, it's, you know, I'm bored, so I won't do more. So we talked to Patrick Teresa at the Westland and we provided tents for all the, sad story, right? You remember sad story? We provided tents for all the homeless veterans and for all the people out in their home, Walmart. We had about 50 tents, 45, 50 tents given to them. Stroudburg though, the veterans were hiding under Bridge Street because they don't know who the drug addicts are behind Walmart. This is a funny story. And so Stroud Township came in with front loaders. If somebody complained, Charlie should complain, just come and take it all. They took it all away. So I contacted them and they look forward to helping me resolve the problem in the future, so. I will also let you know that behind the McDonald's there's bits of people. We tried to feed them, but they wouldn't talk this. So, but if you can fix it, we're going to solve the problem. Okay, and thank you guys. It was really my life. We worked, we really worked hard on it, so it's a great, it's a great.
Well, thank you. Thank you. So if the board would like to join me around the table, we will present, we can present.
Yeah.
Star Wars.
Would you like to take a picture? Good to see you. Yeah, as always. So now we would like to present your plaque. And if you'd like to, maybe you don't, you can hold it.
You can keep your card and run it.
Thank you guys.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Part of the community, thank you all.
Just starting. What can you say?
Okay.
So now we can.
Yeah, no, we just.
Well, Russ, not so fast. Would you like to read your plaque?
Oh, it says. Presenting Russell Fisher, compassionate, dedicated, resourceful for the service to the community through Valor and the Knights of Columbus. Presenting Russell Fisher, compassionate, dedicated, resourceful for his service to the community through Valor and the National Columbus. It's a beautiful plaque, it all very much on my door.
And who nominated you? And and they just, they use three words to describe him and. That's on all the nominations and those are the words that they used to describe.
Well, thank you guys, it is really, really hard. I did not expect.
And I completely forgot because we stood in front of the owls, all we got was us in the rear. So we'll have to rely on channel thirteen.
As we always do.
The two runners up were were to be here tonight, so uh and then you'll see some more. You're actually a part of our uh mid-year presentation. So uh that will be coming up soon and you'll see yourselves there. But I just wanted to take a moment to also recognize uh Dr. Marilyn Brown. This is her plaque, she's uh on vacation and was unable to be here. She's overseas and she was unable to send somebody to represent her in picking up her plaque. So the three words that were used to describe Dr. Marilyn Brown by the person that nominated her was energetic, determined and loving. And this is for her service to the community through the National Council of Negro Women. So we put flyers all up on the front for Valor for your upcoming. Uh, like the holiday meal that you're putting together and all of that. We also did the same for the National Council of Negro Women. Um, and then you'll see where Sue Mahuski actually came in yesterday before her vacation and picked up her plaque. So she is representing Angels and Dragonflies and they're in the middle of their um backpack. Um, things out, so uh we thank them very much for all that they do and contribute to the community. Marking link, I don't know if you had anything to add? So uh and now we can start with. The mid-year presentation, well, we'll see a little bit more about the persons of the year. So and now I'll just share screen. Just make sure I have the right one up.
Well, I will choose myself now rather than just drop all the patients. Thank you all, congratulations, all that's.
Thank you. Have a great night. Okay, so thank you for your patience because I uh. I, and don't laugh, it's because I have all these windows open. So I have to pick the right one. Okay, and I think I did it. From beginning. Okay, so now, uh Michelle, can you, uh do you have control over that box that's in the middle? Okay, and then can you X out the, it says Middle Smithfield, Annette and Johnny, oh, Pinto. I also sent a request to record, did you get it? Okay, so um this way we get that chat, wait a second. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Fisher, oh, because they're they're part of this. They're they're missing their slogs, they're missing their slides, okay, so. Every year, the township staff puts together, um for those of us that are joining. Every year the township, whoops, puts together a presentation. At the beginning of the year, preview of the year, and then in the middle of the year, they compare what we said we were gonna do to what we. Did, um, so that's what. They're excited to do this year, I'm excited for you guys to do it, they work very hard. Thank you uh for everybody that's here that joined us here and on Zoom. And without further ado, um, congratulations again to all our persons of the year. Even only left. Um, and we did the check presentation in the beginning of the year. Um, and now we did the plaque presentation. And that's a little bit about Russ Fisher. And I'm going through these because it is recording and this way, um, anyone who watches this on YouTube will be able to see it. And this will also be up on our, the whole thing will be up on our website when we're done. And this is Marilyn. Um, and you can read a little bit about her there. And then our other runner-up was Sue Mahuski with Angels and Dragonflies. Who's now working with Monroe County Children and Youth and she came and picked up her plaque yesterday. And we wanted to thank all of these sponsors. Tonight they receive their plaques. She got hers already. And now I turn it over to the staff. Wonderful staff. Yeah, let me just get. Sure I can follow along. Okay, so we'll start with an overview, uh this is what we'll be seeing tonight. Um, our priorities for this year were to sell the township own land and to start a revitalized two oh nine, to revitalize the business corridor. And Community and Cultural Center, um expand the programming which um has happened. And to start the Community and Cultural Center Foundation. Uh, so two of those things, we can check off the list, we're very excited about the first check mark. Um, we always include the mission statement and vision statement for those who uh are unfamiliar and see this online. Here's a list of our events, which the next big one is Community Day, which Chris will be talking about later in the program. And this is how we organized the overview. Um, Operations, Public Works and the Public, which is the committee. So just a quick summary of communications, we do have our quarterly newsletters, our business directory, our website. Those things are there just for anybody who wants to look at the presentation on our website or on YouTube to remind them. And as a public service announcement, we just wanted to remind everybody. Uh, that there are four voting districts now instead of two. Um, and moving on with administration, that brings us to Ms. Kylie, our Director of First Impressions.
Thank you again, yes, I'm Kylie, uh, about which means this year. Uh, can you talk of visitors that come in, uh, interns for the park manager, AP and AR and assistant. Uh, so this far, uh so far this year, six months, so far we've had one thousand ninety-two visitors. Um, the bulk of them are coming in for zoning, which is unsurprising. Um, and there are just some stats at the bottom for busiest month, uh, per department. Busiest month was April, um, and the busiest day of the week is Mondays. Uh, they definitely add up. And then there are the kids days by the. Uh, there were twenty or so permits issued so far and there is a collection of new samples so far this year. Um, a lot of them going over to get through voting interest.
Thank you Kylie. And thank you very much for your assistance in plugging up when others are out for long periods upon. They're not, so now we're up to you, Mrs. Michelle.
Hello, everybody, I'm Michelle Cole, uh, this is our second year of the My Work Program. This is the program that started in Allegheny County in two thousand sixteen. The program offers local high school students summer jobs to help connect students with jobs in their local municipalities. The students we've had so far over the last four weeks, they're only gonna be here another two weeks and they're doing an outstanding job. Some of the work that they completed so far is the off Oak Grove compost site. The community gardens, the Echo Lake Park Field. Uh, needs have just grown as everybody knows very fast this year. You can, you can see the signs, you can see the playground equipment, the garden blocks, everybody is recommending the students on. All the work that they've been working so far. And we have congratulations online one week. This was the surprise. You know, congratulations to Rachel, Kylie and Myra. Who attended the last coconut leadership and next year's participants, Bonnie, Christmas and Joan Boyson.
Yeah, and the reason why there's a champagne bottle there is because there's no picture of you guys. At the end of your class, there's no selfies.
Employee training, over fifty hours of webinars and seminars since uh January first of this year. Uh, public works with Labor Training, L TAP, and of course the coconut leadership, sunshine law, form of law, greater no one. Overview.
So thank you, Mrs. Michelle, appreciate it. And now we're up to budget and finance, that would be Bonnie, just uh wave on when you want me to change the screen. We wanted to say welcome. Bonnie Christman is our newest employee here, so thank you for joining the team.
Thank you for having me. I'm only here for a short amount of time, but we've taken care of our audits, kind of like, let's go through our website. Also our budget, uh, I guess the beginning there, um, is also on our website. Uh, so far, we're doing pretty well with uh tax revenue. Um, we're relying a little bit with the one point real estate, playing around with it. Um, I got it received January before yet, so that may change some of the ones that you're gonna see on the next slide. And we've received approximately eighty-seven percent of the fire EMS tax receipts for this year that were. That are related in real estate taxes versus the budget that was at the other.
There we go.
Uh, it's kinda hard to see, but the uh top tier is what we've collected in um. Uh, tax revenue versus uh this year, January, June versus January to June of last year. Um, and then I have it versus the period date budget and then uh whether they're over or under budget for the year, for for the period. Um, inside of mine is real to real estate transfers and earned income. Uh, we're doing pretty well in those areas, so um hopefully that'll continue to to maintain where it's at. Uh, zoning, it looks probably a little bit worse on the screen than it does, only because I haven't had a chance to post the six inch back of credit card. Payments from the zoning office, they're crushing it, they're beast, so.
Yeah, to Bonnie's credit, you put that figure in there.
Yeah, once those get posted, it's breaking out at roughly around forty-five thousand dollars, digital revenue. Um, and then our overall budget, total income, total expenses, period made. Um, and where we're at overall in the budget, so we're in pretty good shape there. And then at the very bottom, um, this was the one last year, uh is the fire EMS tax. And it break out, I don't know what is uh being distributed to fire, just being distributed to EMS entities. Um, it's gonna show in the red because we don't have any historical data to track it to. So next year, this line will change and it'll have any. And then the next slide is a little bit about grant information. Uh, when I came on board, uh, not a great initial process, but the, there are a couple of grants that, um. I specifically have been processing payments, um, in the underkind combination district for the public works doing uh Rover on Firestone Road. Uh, the overall grant for that was one hundred thirteen thousand. Then we also have the two twenty-nine, two hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred nineteen for T C E D for the Oak Grove Municipal Compost Center. Uh, new uh. It was the final payment for the, for the uh bribe that we had purchased two years ago. Um, and then the new uh floater. And then uh twenty thousand dollars, this is new to me, um, is the government research bureau. Uh, community impact grant, it's the. To help with cleanup and uh street skating, Walmart roads. And then also uh spark litter rehabilitation and violence two oh nine. Um, the energy cost savings, we recently underwent a signed contract in February prior to my start here. To spare, uh reduce uh energy rates across all of our net accounts. Um, overall, this will amount to a forty percent cost difference in township favor over the next uh the length of my capital eighteen months. So uh which will realize about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in savings over the eighteen months. And we also have uh solar panels too, and we just don't have us the data on the savings area. Cause that just actually kicked in.
Yeah, that's it. Hey, I let everybody know about this surprise. So uh Joan couldn't join us tonight, um, for sewer, but um her her goals, these are straight out of preview. Finally, um, and this is the snapshot that we always provide. So that you could see how many sewer EDUs are uh left. For it, and remember when we were talking about um the original reason for the, that was stated for the golf course being purchased. Um, and it was for EDUs, here you can see, right now, today, we have nine hundred and thirty-three EDUs. So we didn't need to purchase the eight hundred and. Uh, whenever that was, eight hundred and eighty. Um, and you can see from this chart here how much space Exploria has in their plant. Right, the total plant capacity is one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five gallons a day. And available for purchase is one thousand four hundred and sixty-four gallons. So no need for us to build a new sewer plant, we could simply bring up Exploria and ask them if they would like to. Sell us some of their unused EDUs. So the goals for capital improvements for sewer, um, we we do need to get moving on moving that sewer line. Um, we were awarded a grant from it, we'll have to, you know, if Ben was here, I'd be looking over to him saying, help, help, how can we? Move this forward, pump station eight, that rehab was completed, so good. Um, no sooner was that completed than we did have to buy and pump for the retwell for it. But that was minor compared to this rehab. Um, generators, those, that has also been completed, you could see the fine work public works did by creating these concrete pads. Um, and setting them on there, that saved us money from having to hire a contractor to do it, there's just a a picture of one. The odor control has always been um. Uh, a project that we work on with sewer, as you can imagine. So um, we're all exploring a new odor control system, it's pretty expensive. So we thought we would test drive first to make sure it works with your um spending a considerable amount in the six figures. Um, as you know, Holly couldn't be with us this evening. So here we are with the Community and Cultural Center, we'll just take a walk through that. Um, we always put up the list of partners that there is and the purpose of it, just for those looking at home. Um, or looking later on YouTube can see it and we keep adding more to the list of partners, so that's always a a good thing. Um, and the mission was simply to create a good space for good people to do good work for the common good. Um, it's a space designed for the community to gather, it's in the middle of our township, we're not a walkable. Community like the burbs are, so we need a central place and yeah, it it has served its, it's serving its purpose. As well as housing the live. Community like the burbs are, so we need a central place and yeah, it, it has served its, it's serving its purpose as well as housing the library of the Smithfields. Um and there's a very good return on investment. For libraries and community centers and parks, those that live closer to them have higher market values. Um so you can, you can ask the library for that report. They'll be glad to give you their return on investment report of what a library brings to the community. We're lucky to have Deborah Emin in the audience tonight. She is our representative on the Library of the Smithfields Board.
Also the foundation.
Yes, and also, right, the Library Foundation as well. Um so. Uh you could see how busy the community and cultural center has gotten. So currently it's booked a hundred and fifty two times for this year and we're not even uh. It's only half the year, you know, for people to come uh and book events. They have thirty five single events, ten recurring events, and that's up almost thirty percent. Over last year and it just keeps increasing. These are some of the. Folks that have been using the community center on a regular basis. We're happy to add silver sneakers to it. People seem to be very excited about that. Um we've got a lot of things for seniors actually at the, at the community center and the library does a lot of things for children, so that's, it covers. Both ends. Um the list of exhibits, we're full this year. Um November and December are generally reserved for tree lighting and holiday decorating because of the festivities that's had in the park there. Um you can run over and see the Ada Weinstein art exhibit through this month. Here are the upcoming events. You can also find those on our website. Um and the kiosk is up and running. So the purpose of this interactive kiosk. Um is much like any museum that does not have the staff. Or the, the, the funding to fund the staff to be there to walk you through whatever the exhibit is. So you could see it, it got its um virgin journey. On the Middle Smithfield Township Community and Cultural Center kiosk from the Marshall's Creek explosion. So folks could walk in, they could view the walls. Uh and see, whoops, they could view what was hanging on the walls for this display and then, and what was in the showcases. And then walk over to this kiosk and punch through what all those things were and what they meant. And if somebody wanted to stand there and read it, they, there were all the newspaper clippings, all the newspaper articles. So you could see how something like that would be useful. John's sitting here, he just sent an email. Um John is a master gardener, one of the many legion that put together the um rain garden in front of the community center. So now s- he's got a whole presentation of how it happened, how you could do it, advice for homeowners if you wanted to do it. How it affects the stormwater, which is its own separate presentation. So a resident can walk in and say, I think I'd like to do that at home. How do I do it? And punch through. That presentation right on this interactive kiosk. They can punch through to see where they would buy the plants, which would of course. Lead to our local businesses here. Um James has done a yeoman's job of putting. All our businesses to make sure that they're represented on this kiosk, so any family that's looking through any of this. Can then go get lunch next door or wherever the kiosk directs them to go according to their taste. Um so we're thankful for a grant that we see, we received last year. It was made possible through the American Rescue Plan. The funds came through the D C E D and now you can actually hear yourself, I'd like to say hear yourself think, but you can also hear yourself talk. In the community room because the acoustic panels have just done a terrific job. Um and the township had, didn't have to match anything on that grant, so that's about ten thousand dollars worth of acoustic panels that you're looking at. So we can thank representative folks for that. Um just to shout out James, thank you very much for um submitting a grant application to the Greater League Valley Chamber of Commerce. So we now have more funds to put up more um hometown hero banners. And that brings us to golf. So Chris, would you like to take over golf?
Alright, so um obviously there's some big news with golf, but in the meantime, we have been running the golf course for the first half of the year. Um so uh the first couple of slides were given from Todd Brown, who's our golf editor, who can do this. Uh the first half of the year has been uh kind of mixed results. Uh there was some. Poor weather in May that affected our golf rounds, but since that has cleaned up, cleared up uh at the end of May and for June and now to July, it's been much better. Um he also expects the rest of the year to be pretty solid uh as golf times at, at Coachable Poconos. Are more available and cheaper than at most of the golf courses in New Jersey and New York, so we do still provide a pretty good round for those few points. Um as we had every year um for the last several years anyway, we have a five, five, five goal, which means we increased around. Play by five percent, increased revenue by five percent and reduced expenses by five percent. Um currently uh for year to date, we are down uh in front of the plan originally, but we're also quite a bit down in uh expenses, so that's a, a good thing with golf. And Todd expects that people be on case for about between eleven thousand and twelve thousand back under grounds straight here.
Let's, I mean, we know why it went down because of the weather, but why, why is there a decrease in expenses, Mark? It's your time for shouting. In quarry lines, want to know, how are we down? Seven and a half percent on expenses.
One, cut, cut corners where we can, try not to spend if not needed. Christopher helps with that.
Uh our Friday night scruples are happening again this summer. They have been pretty well received. Um Todd has also been looking to do additional lead opportunities such as tavern business leagues. Um and we offer a couple of explorers at the end of the year event and uh we have other events that have been going on, including Memorial Day. And uh wait, Ben, he's planning a Labor Day outing as well. Uh so for this year, we have two charity events booked. Uh the Valor Tournament uh was on June fifteenth. There is also one book. Our first time for the East Ridge every little week. Uh we don't have many this year. We usually, in the past, we had way more than that, but. We have far fewer this year because most people weren't aware that there was the potential lands now uh. Hopefully much more solid sale.
Yeah, so um I asked Todd how the Valor Tournament did. He said they got more golfers than last year. They had about. Um I think he said sixty nine, which is uh.
Yeah, he, yeah, after, after the fact, he said that it was a, a good day. It had, um I think the weather was not forecast to be great, but it ended up being. Just fine and they had a good day.
So that's, so we're happy about that. We're, it's a shame Russ Fisher left.
Uh for marketing, we've been using, we've done the last Saturday years, uh including advertising magazines and in the photos at the Lake Valley. We have uh sent out regular e-blogs to overall other outlets and people on our e-blog list, um which are all recent golfer people who have actually golfed at the golf course. Um. We also post things on our social media and our website. We uh have banners for two oh nine for what we uh discounted golfing uh April and November. And also we run ads on, on Google, which have been uh pretty well uh fulfilling the last couple of years.
There goes Chris showing off his digital marketing certificate again. Good job, Chris.
Uh these are just a few numbers for the first half of the year. Uh after that, quite the first half of the year, since uh from the middle of June. Um for visitors to the website, about eighty seven hundred people have visited the website, twenty four thousand total page views. And about sixty one hundred visits, this is a difference of the T booking page on the website. And we hope that, that will continue through the summer and into the fall.
Thank you. So um. Everybody here knows the big news. Um we. Went out to bid in December of twenty twenty three and uh we didn't receive anything. We uh went out to bid again in March of twenty twenty four and received no bids and wisely extended the bid for ninety days. Um and in June, ta-da, we received four bids and we awarded to the highest bidder, so um. We are moving towards a closing. What happens next? So we anticipate a closing at the end of August. Um and the country club of the Poconos and the Wishburn Pines banquet hall will have a new owner. The township will no longer own it. What this does is puts over four hundred and nine acres back on the tax rolls because as long as the township owns it, we're not collecting any taxes. Um and new development there um for anything they decide to do would provide jobs. It would increase the local services tax, which we give to fire and EMS. Um and it would also increase earned income tax. So most of all, it would eliminate the tax burden and expense of owning a golf course and banquet hall. It would relieve the taxpayer of that responsibility. So we're very happy that we have a new owner that is interested in keeping this vibrant and open. And that brings us to Vicki and zoning. Oh, sorry. I had the animation, oh that was.
Tracer is our permitting system and we are continuing to make it um better. As you can see, we um have our online permitting, uh permit payments done and we offer accurate parcel and zoning data. On the lay or coming up over the business portal and we're ready to do residents and contractors check in. Alright, so um. Been permits, code violations, complaints, nine oh one violations. As you can see, we have over a hundred, over a hundred violations entered in September since January to June. And we are accepting credit card payments and this goes directly to the permit, so we don't um payments. Um not that we have. Using, we're using mobile apps in the field for violations. We're tracking short-term rental violations in the place and coming soon is. The online book permit portal, which will make the application process and can, the applicant can track their permit from start to finish. The citizens reporter will be um that they can go online and report a complaint or something throughout the whole township. Instead of calling or submitting an inform.
And they would be able to check on the status of everything that they're recording too. Right, so that's also good because they could do this in the middle of the night. It's sort of like a self-serve and it would lessen phone calls to zoning. And it would lessen the people probably coming into the, to the building.
Alright, and for enforcement, um the notice of violations of um. Notices of violations issued, we had over ten alcohol pouring morning letters sent and over thirty violation letters sent. This includes like junkyards. Construction without permits, chickens and roosters not permitted in, in certain zones, barbing dogs, dogs running at large, and noise and property maintenance.
And where did you think you got it at?
Ask our residents and H O As and P O As to be our eyes and ears for these different uh. Oops, sorry. Uh violations and stuff, um and we encourage humanification. As you can see, in twenty seventeen, we adopted the resale occupancy ordinance and we continue to um track. Move in, move outs, as we call it, um and issue resale applications. From January to July, we've issued a hundred and seventy five resale used occupancy application or uh permits or licenses, I guess you can call it, certificates.
And so it's sort of remained steady and this sort of matches the numbers that Bo- uh Bonnie had in her um financial report. So getting from a high of twenty twenty two coming off of COVID, right? So and then we lost the inventory and now we're, we're sort of climbing, sorry.
Um this is the other permit that are issued, zoning building, the ride ahead subjects. As you can see, um zoning a building. Zoning is pretty um steady, building has gone up, increased. Uh this is, this includes like fences, pools, decks, additions. You name it, it's, it's there.
I was just going to ask you on the building permits, what are you seeing the most of? Is it expanding outdoor spaces or is it?
A lot of expanding the decks, a lot of solar. Yeah.
Well, generators is very smart for this area, so, so you're seeing a lot of solar permits now?
Yes, quite a bit of it. And then we have our licenses. As you can see, it's consistent, a hundred and forty two. This is based on the expiration date, which is in October, uh October thirty first. We do have a few that are um still outstanding and we're working on getting them to flights to get their permits. And we are looking for someone to fill a vacancy on the zoning hearing board, so if you're. Interested, you must be seventeen years of age and you can contact me, Sean. So have a ball.
Uh well, thank you. What's the most fun part of your job?
You should go to this. And I love making people happy. What? I like making people happy, yes.
But giving them their permit.
Giving their arguments.
As opposed to the Lord.
As opposed to.
Whose job is what? Whose job is what?
Oh, um. Not making people happy. There's a, there's a saying in the zoning office, if you're not making people happy, you're not doing your job. So but issuing permits is my thing.
Thank you, Vicki. Appreciate it. And that brings us to the other part, planning.
Okay, don't blink, you're gonna miss something.
At preview, we had a picture of a table because everything was tabled and now we have dun, dun, dun.
And they're still labeled. Purple Care Facility is, um it is tabled again. Um. Marshall Square Shopping Center because over the years, many, many years, there were a lot of conditional uses, so the engineer, our township engineer. Has gone through all those conditional uses and summarized. And it is now um at legal. It'll probably go back to planning commission to recommend. You'll. Sometime you go to the board of supervisors to make determinations, then they will be able to move on with their plans. If they so wish.
And still, yes, but we're still you, still you on legal.
Resolutions, proposed ordinances on the website. Very thorough, thanks Christopher. Got eighteen resolutions passed before this year, including the order of the ring line vote.
That's right, under communications, who didn't give a shout out to Christopher who maintains the website and gets everything up there. So thank you.
We didn't have, I haven't had any ordinances passed this year yet. So the most recent resolutions were the fire tax revenue and EMS tasks.
And before everybody gets all excited about the compensation for the elected township auditors.
That will not go into effect until they are elect, reelected and take office again.
And what is their hourly rate?
Ten dollars an hour under the second class township code and it can go up to eighteen dollars an hour once they're reelected. The board can pass that resolution that they could. Now be compensated up to the eighteen dollars an hour.
And because the elected township auditor's only job, since we assign a CPA to do the books, is to um. Set the compensation for any working supervisors, what would you say their average hours are every year? They meet. Once a year officially, maybe twice because of the hours, yeah, so no more than twenty. For the whole year.
And they can't resign and be reappointed and get the race?
No.
That was in the legislation, because they do something to think of that. Cause they do something to think of that. Alright.
Still you. Oh, sorry, Chris.
So really, so we're presented a breakdown of granted requests that have been received so far this year as of Monday, July eighth. There were one hundred requests received in twenty twenty-four, ninety-nine, did it in five business days. One was extended by thirty days. Uh, under the responses, it's the breakdown of denied, granted, or part, partially denied and granted is pretty even. Um, and at the bottom, it's by permit, as you can see, eighty-eight out of one hundred. Or something to do with a request for a property reserving or lighting. So most of the time I walk over to Vicky and ask her for other requests and requesting. Uh, also, one out of the one hundred responses was appealed to the best way the Office of Open Records. The Office of Open Records determined that the township was directed to deny orders.
Yeah, I'm most impressed with the completed in five days. Because you can automatically issue a thirty-day extension. Once you receive the request, but as you can see from this slide, uh, Christopher rarely does that. You know, he just completes it in the five days, so. Very good. So that brings us to Ms. Rachel, our emergency, uh, management coordinator, who will take us through emergency preparedness.
Um, I'm Rachel, and so the EMS study was, um, finalized now. Um, and we have met with Jalen and Associates, who gave the completed report, um, for our EMS in the area. Um, I don't know if you want to expand on that.
So, uh, yeah, so there was a, a big meeting, uh. Very unmealed, but all the, all the agencies that service us, that Rachel manages. The fire companies and the ambulance companies were present, as well as the four municipalities that hired Jalen. Because everybody was, they submitted a draft and everyone was asked to submit their comments. So then what we got was that, the thing that Rachel now has, a thick report. Um, with a list of everybody's comments that they addressed and they presented. So I, I said the same thing you just said, only longer. But thank you for the opportunity. So now, uh, while the report is done, I mean, you, you get the study done so that it gives you recommendations. And now we have to implement the recommendations. So the work is, is ongoing and some of those recommendations were tricked. So thank you, Rachel. And thank you for pulling this together as well.
Yes, and here are the total, uh, calls we wanted to do for our fire companies that cover the township. Um, as you can see, Marshall Street is currently leading the board with four hundred and twelve calls year to date. Um, with a hundred and ninety-five of those going in Middle Smithfield. Uh, Bush Hill has a total of two hundred and fifty-four with sixty-one going to Middle Smithfield. And Shawnee is at ninety-six with twenty-nine going to Middle Smithfield. And same thing with our ambulance companies. Bush Hill's total calls is fifteen seventy-eight with eight sixty-nines in middle. Uh, suburban with thirty-six twenty and two fifty-nine towards township. Uh, Leaven Play, six hundred and one with a hundred and nine to Middle Smithfield. And Marshall Street EMS, eighty-six with forty-three coming to Middle Smithfield.
And thank you for pulling that together, Rachel. And it's still you, public works. So thank you.
Uh, so with public works, um, those are a snapshot of the projects that we had laid out for this year. Um, we started the municipal drive project, um, you can have a ski on the corner. Um, they started to dig away at the corner to get that straightened out a little bit. Um, and do drainage and bank repair. Um, and then we're gonna be moving up to another calls to cut banks and pave. Um, and do drainage and shoulder improvement up there as well. Um, our cleanup ramp is in progress out back, which in a further slide will have more control on that.
Oh, sorry.
Um, and then our MS four, oh, if you go back.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was looking for the right.
Um, our MS four project, um, up on Drive on Drive in, uh, Reservoir Ridge. Uh, Wooddale area is going to be, um, coming up more towards the fall, um, to work on flooding. Uh, concern in that area for residents. Um, Firestone Lane, uh, you probably saw that it wasn't on our projected project for this year. Um, we are contacted by a member of County Conservation District, um, that they had some, uh, money that they needed to, uh, get used to help, uh, create more, uh, sure the need to get that funding year to year from the state. Um, so this year we were able to get a grant for a total of a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and cents. Uh, to get that project done. Um, we were able to do, uh, six new drainage pipes installed and replace one existing. Um, we took a total of twenty-five hundred yards of material added to the base. Um, as well as installing, uh, deodorants, health, drainage and stability of the road. Um, and then we added a little twenty-one hundred tons of D S A, which is the actual, um, material that hardens. It basically makes it kind of like an asphalt, um, for that portion of the road. Um, as well as, uh, brush trimming and cutting the roadway back to help me do that. Um, that's our beginning schedule for this year. Uh, we're gonna be doing mill acres, the entire, uh, main drive of Beverly Drive from Del Road through the cul-de-sac. Uh, Coba Road from Crown Point, uh, to Tigo Lake, which is gonna be right around, uh, the community garden area. Just hiding where we were a couple of years ago. Um, Big Ridge Drive from French, where we left off last year, through to, uh, Village Drive. So that will be, uh, completely done for the whole group length that we own. Uh, and then Village Drive, we're putting the top portion on, um, of what we had fresh painted last year, um, over the new ridge, um, as well as then doing a full paint of it until once the corner project is finished from two or three to level. Um, Chippio, which is gonna be taking place here in about two weeks. Um, so that's gonna be, uh, Waybridge Lane, Scenery Court, Russell Bridge Road, Timothy Lake from Township Land, Brutus Beach. Um, and then thank you guys for public works. We did get a new, um, software to help us keep track of inventory and our asset management, as well as maintenance record keeping for our trucks and equipment. Um, we will have eight employees who have full access, uh, to the system to be able to perform those duties, as well as direct them that be at the requested level. Um, to be able to input work orders that needs to be done on specific trucks or equipment. Uh, we'll be able to specify, assign specific work orders to employees, um, as well as do an accurate, accurate cost tracking. Um, so when we get orders in, I'll be able to put those dollars and cents into that particular department. Be able to sign that part to that, uh, particular, um, work order and keep track of time and all those sorts of things. So I'll have a better snapshot overview of how things are actually about on the public works, um, on maintenance side. Um, so our goal was to have that done by the end of July. Um, I just had our meeting today and we're gonna be on live next week.
That's great.
Yeah.
I'm really excited about this project. This is like a monday.com, only it has support. Like that monday.com, the support was, here's our YouTube channel, you know? So I'm constantly relying on like Chris or Rachel to do it. So, but this, this will be really good and it's very cost-effective too. So I think you had a question from this young lady.
You said Tigo Lake and Coba, that's the one getting worked on?
No, Tigo from Crown Point to Tigo on Coba. That's a portion of the campaign this year. We go on section one of Coba Road.
So how many are we getting to the next session of Tigo?
What's that?
How far are Tigo Lake down over that?
We're not going on Tigo Lake, on Coba.
Well, Coba is there.
Yeah, we're going, yeah, there's gonna be a that portion. Uh, so we do that, like roughly every year, we try and figure in a portion of Coba. And, um, it just depends on how far we actually go.
I think we're going from Tigo back to Coba.
Yes. Yeah, to.
Towards, towards community garden.
To the community garden, the, um, the joint program for that one, actually. Um, yeah, so with maintaining, um, the, our pool unit is actually, they're required to, um, do a full, uh, launch training, um, before we can actually go live, um, with that. And we've had incredible support and help with the whole onboarding experience with them. Um, so they'll, they'll get any questions answered, um, and stuff like that. So we get a full, not actually going to.
Well, I enjoyed your presentation of that, uh, software during the staff meeting. So maybe when you get to the next leg, like, what did you say, next week or the week after?
Next week, we're gonna be going live, um, actually, our goal, I mean, on Tuesday.
Oh.
So, um.
So maybe Tuesday or the following Tuesday, you could do another one at the staff meeting and show where you were. I really like it. So.
And I think there is, yes.
Yeah, so thanks for taking the initiative to going out and getting that.
Yeah, thank you guys for approving, um, this is the time to come in and.
Easy sell.
Yeah, if you want to move us from the N M A, or from the chocolate days. Um, next is the, uh. Yeah, protect the composting. Um, so our next inflection dates are going to be October fourteenth through December sixth, sounds to me the whole thing. Um, and then our next, uh, is, um, October eleventh and twelfth. Um, and we will also be utilizing the new plan ramp that we have down here. We'll still be running, up to the same, um, but with this new ramp construction, um, we're hoping to be able to expand the days, um, that is accessible to the residents. Um, adding a couple of their Fridays or potentially Saturdays, uh, to the schedule as opposed to just the events of, uh, spring cleanup. Um, those are our totals from spring. Um, as you can see, we did a hundred and thirty-two the first day, a hundred and seventy-one the second, and a hundred and ninety-one on Saturday, the third day. Um, it was kind of slow this year, surprisingly, first day cleanup. Um, but without that, um, we still had a deficit of about sixty-five hundred. Um, which doesn't include the labor, um, there's some other costs in there as well. Um, but we did do, uh, total dumpster calls, because it was slower, was, um, on the lower side. Um, and I don't know how many people actually, um, use the training this year. They did stay pretty steady, um, we took a lot in the lock bins that we have. Um, so I'm assuming that they, they did fairly well, um, with that also.
And then we could check later too, like, cause this is for both locations, right? These totals, so you could see how much came from Wooddale and how much was, was done over, over here. You know.
Yeah, I just saw them first together and stuff.
Yeah, no, cause the Wooddale folks are very appreciative that it's up there and they don't have to come all the way down here.
Yeah.
You know, to do it.
That, that has, um, impacted us quite a bit. Um, we've heard a lot from residents, especially down here, you know? Even if it's fifty people going to Wooddale, that's fifty less bars that are sitting in line here, you know? Um, so they, everybody as, as a whole, really appreciates having that, that second site.
So, uh, and this is also good to have too, to do this kind of math. Because on the next slide, I think is we, oh no, where you're talking about the cleanup ramp. You know, for it, so this way you can compare and sort of do a cost benefit between this and your cleanup ramp and.
Yeah, we need to, to see that next year.
Yeah.
Uh, build a benefit.
Yeah. So that's good.
Um, and then for Oak Row, um, those are our totals so far for the year. Um, we're great about on track for where we were last year. We're a little down, but not, not anything too crazy. Um, still very busy. Um, and like Bonnie has said, uh, earlier in the presentation, we did apply for, um, another grant, uh, to do the final payment for our rear grinder that we had gotten in twenty twenty. Um, as well as applying for a new wheel loader for the facility, uh, because the one that is down there currently is owned by Middle Smithfield. Um, so that will be, uh, slowly going back in the program.
Great, and twenty-three commercial vendors, you said, up from previous years or?
Yes, um, so we were able to, um, have staff down there, uh, to be able to get those commercial vendors. Um, we did drop off the past couple of years. We averaged probably about fifteen or so, um, the last two to three years. Um, but being able to have staff there, uh, right at the beginning of prime time season, um, did increase the numbers. Um, and we did grind down in Spinborough. Um, for the spring so far, we go back down in the fall, uh, late fall after their, uh, week election also.
Well, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And now we're up to the public portion of it. And James, you're up now.
Alright. Good evening, we're my own just grabbing that note, the boundary here with the township. Uh, in a nutshell, our economic development committee is a resource for our business community. And they're, they help our business community, uh, be aware of resources available to them. They help to create a diverse and innovative foundation. Next slide please. Uh, so the goal we've been working on towards way forward is to raise awareness of businesses as well as, uh, resources and our E C to our businesses. Uh, one big thing that we've been working on, you'll see some more about that later on, is our revitalizing program, uh, which we started. Little staff committee just that we filmed in July last year and just started learning to get some of these projects, um, across the finish line now. So, uh, really exciting stuff. Uh, we also have five of our business advertising actors.
Are you just gonna look at me?
Why?
I don't know.
So just do the one at a time. Wait until you get. Sorry.
So, uh, we have required our business advertising actors, uh, we have a shopable program, which we brought it up here as well as a holiday program. Uh, we also send the business directly to all of our residents, so they are aware of what is available here. We want to keep, uh, our residents' dollars here in this township shopping here. So our shopping program focuses on that. We also do our river cuttings and other things for our business students to get their focus on. And as you can see, um, we increase our business community participation every year with our shopable program. Um, and we've been working on building the vacancies within our township complexes. And are looking to renew our lure program for twenty twenty-five. So that's a project that we are also, uh, in the works on. Next slide please. We welcome all businesses, so this is the list of a few that we welcomed from, uh, beginning of this year. And as you can see, the bottom there, they'll highlight one, uh, where they, we hope to be welcoming, uh, well, officially at the detailed end of August. As, uh, the country club of Poconos, um, was officially announced this time as better for, uh, my chair. Next slide please. Um, some upcoming ones, actually, one right at the top there, Exkloria's Poconal Mo, which is kind of, kind of like a concierge to public. Of all the resources that they have available to them, uh, just opened today. Um, they got a sale beginning of this week.
Thanks, Vicky.
And I'll be getting that.
You made them happy.
Yeah. Poconal, we're seeing the, um, Deerfield Inn, uh, was sold this year and it will be opening, uh, summer as Pocono Ridge Inn. You have a building above Mediterranean, uh, who will be coming here this, uh, this year as well. Uh, and more and more, next slide please. And, uh, I can't stress it enough that community development is economic development. As we mentioned earlier, uh, um, we have worked with our, our three partnerships, where our really have a chamber of commerce, uh, in getting our, their industry grant. We had two thousand dollars last year that we got to convince our hotel community or banner program at the community center. And another, uh, five hundred this year. Uh, we're looking for a few more good men and women to feature. So if you know anybody, please happen, uh, contact the township. Next slide please. And, uh, we are also working on getting our community map out very soon. Uh, we. And uh, we are also working on getting our community map out very soon, uh, we are thanks for our EDC where you'll get thirty businesses, you'll be able to owe three hundred dollars. Uh, sponsoring townships, uh, updating community map and advertising so you can get in front of our residents, next slide please. And as you can see, one of the biggest things that we've been focusing on is our revitalized two oh nine grant program, helping with the auctions, streetscaping, landscaping. Uh, ten million trees, this is just an example of one project here, that's the Pocono Cafe, that's one of the first ones created. Um, you're recording your after uh, picture. Next slide please. And speaking of streetscaping, and that has a little bit on this, we've been working with our um, our EDC, we're with Pendot to help. With uh, streetscaping route two or nine, that's a another. Goal of the township and uh, and that the ten million trees program, I think you have a little bit to offer here.
Yeah, so uh, you started in Bonnie's slide where she mentioned the twenty thousand dollars that was received from the Pocono Visitors Bureau. Um, for Tidy Town, which is, or Tidy Township, which is for picking up roadside litter and streetscaping. So for the streetscaping, the Economic Development Committee, um, we would like to ask for uh, their help with it too. But what James and I have done is reached out to Pendot and filed the papers for the adopted beautify program, so. In the, a a long time ago, I want to, like, twenty thirteen-ish. Um, when the Price Chopper Plaza was up and there was Royal Asian there, there were complaints that no one wanted to see the back. Uh, you know, you enter our township and the first thing you see is the back of a uh, Chinese food place with their dumpsters and mops and all that kind of stuff in the back of the of the building. So the township reached out to Pendot, we filled out the forms for the adopted beautify. And Richard's Tree Farm went back there and um, did a nice planting for it, and the idea was for that stuff to grow up and cover over. The back of the building, so what we are proposing now for streetscaping to um. Help revitalize two oh nine is there are areas that James and I identified that Pendot owns and. Uh, we filled out the forms for that so that we can go through that. On the other hand, there is the ten million trees program, so that's free trees that you can get. Um, if you are a five oh one C three or conservationist or any of these groups, so usually you could reach out to groups like Pocono Heritage Land Trust. Broadhead Watershed Association or other groups like that, and um. The trees that come, just to do a little plug for it and uh, not to make this longer than it than it has to be, but the roots are easily uh, ten inches uh, deep. When you get these little saplings and they take really well, so it's all free, so we've placed our order. Um, and we hope to incorporate that into the project, so thank you for your help, James, and more more work for EDC to do, so thank you.
Alright, next slide please. And uh, with revitalizing two oh nine, uh, the committee is very senior projects, in fact, we have a member here today. And everybody right here, John, she's also a part of our EDC, and our revitalizing base, um, we. Recommended since April ninth, uh, applications for board supervisors. And before this evening's meeting, we had six projects nominarily approved, um, which now will be eight.
Just rubbing it on past.
Low it down.
So if you, here you could see the projects this year.
Yeah, so this is the list, just the the few that prior to this meeting were nominarily approved, next slide please. You will see, there's a few examples of some of the projects, um, right there in the on the right hand side, we'll see uh, Pocono Cafe, um. Beginning and mid project, you will see also a few of the other, um, you know, window replacement, painting and landscaping uh, projects that are coming up. Next slide please. And these work on the docket for tonight and now are uh, on the docket for.
Keep rubbing it in.
Word letters going out soon, so uh, these are just examples of a few other of the projects, uh, painting and also the trim repair for uh, Beverly Plaza. Next slide please. And so with that, um, we're at about now about a little over ninety thousand, ninety thousand more to probably improve this nominarily approved since April. Uh, we're still accepting more applications, so.
Thank you, James, and thank you to the Economic Development Committee for spreading the word. Thank you, James, done a terrific job. On it. Um, and then, so next up is Historical Commission, they always leave their mission and uh, vision up. For those that view these online, um, their goals, uh, for twenty twenty-four, this is just a reminder of what their goals. That they set for themselves were, um, so their upcoming events and anniversaries, um, every year we. In August, we remember the flood of fifty-five, there's the Memory Makers Luncheon coming up, so if you are a senior citizen and or if you've lived here thirty years or longer. You are welcome to come, and uh, October is the Marshals Creek Mastodon Month, um, and Fossil Day. So in all of these, you could find displays at the Community and Cultural Center. So for this year's Memory Makers, dun 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 dun, what is this year's topic? Medicine in Monroe County, and it's a shame that Debbie Kulik just walked out because. Uh, this is, uh, she is giving a presentation at Memory Makers with this. As well as Danny Younger, who is a local historian and resident, and he will also be giving a presentation regarding this, and. This is actually pretty, pretty interesting stuff, there you see a picture of the General Hospital, which is now Lehigh Valley Hospital, Pocono, and its humble beginnings. Um, and here are some other old photos that we found, can you, who would have guessed that the old Rosen's Building? That, you know, Rosen's that was going out of business for twenty years, the furniture store that had the going out of business sale for twenty years. Is now apartments, but it originally started as Dr. Call, Rosen Crohn's Hospital. Um, so these are some of the old photos that she's found. We also mark anniversaries, our Historical Commission does a good job of that, so we just recently had the explosion on June twenty-sixth. Um, and then you can see yourself, so this is what the inside of the community center looked like. When we had everything up, you saw a little bit of this under the Community and Cultural Center slides. Um, earlier in this program, but here you can see uh. The Marshals Creek Explosion, all the things that were found that we blew up on giant art boards and put around. Marshals Creek Fire Company was kind enough to donate to us or for display purposes only, I mean, they they had it. These hats and artifacts from the actual explosion, um, just to spend a a minute on this. Uh, one of the goals for the Historical Commission is to expand the site where the explosion uh, occurred, meaning. Expand the um, display and memorial there, so now that we have a state marker, um, we are free to expand in any way that we like there. Um, had we done that first, we would have disqualified ourselves for the state marker and we wanted to give it another shot and we're we're glad that the persistence paid off. So we are looking for um, survivors and folks who were witnesses. That day to the explosion because there is an ad hoc committee that contains members of Marshals Creek Fire Company. The Township Historical Commission and representatives of the civilians who were uh, affected that day. So um, this, the purpose of this ad hoc committee is to receive all the. Input on what a proper memorial would be, for example, um, for Marshals Creek Fire Company, we would like to have. Or it was suggested to have a um, on the anniversary of the explosion, June twenty-sixth every year, of a red. Spotlight that goes up in the air and you can see it for miles around. Um, another thought was to have a plexiglass kiosk so that when, like the ones that you see in in national parks, so when you look through the plexiglass. Etched on it would be the outline of the explosion, so people could actually view the site where it was and see an etching of what it actually looked like. Um, a civilian member of the group suggested that there be a marker for each person who was lost that day, whether a firefighter or a civilian. And a plaque um, that said something about them and their lives so that they would always be remembered, so. Uh, just wanted to put that out there because we are looking for people who remember that day for it, so. Uh, and it would be nice, uh, these displays that you see there, the the hat, the helmets and other artifacts that Marshals Creek Fire Company has. If anyone knows of a fiberglass artist, we thought that that could also be a memorial on the site, to have something like that recreated. In a larger scale, um, just so people could see what the destruction was, something that had a logo, and we do this every year too. So behind the marker, which you could see in the lower uh, left-hand side of the slide, um. The state marker behind that is the billboard, so we'll always be uh, putting something up there and. Um, we put learn more at middle smithfield township dot com because then people could go to our website. And learn more about the explosion, it leads you right, uh, there's always a banner on our site that leads you right to what that history was. And that's it, we also have a vacancy on the Historical Commission and we need you. And this brings us to dun dun dun, Christopher, first parks and activation and litter and beautification.
Alright, this is the mission, you can speak that. Uh, some of the accomplishments we've had so far, your date in parks is our seventeenth annual extravaganza, which was on March twenty-fourth, we had a pretty good turnout for that event, as we usually do. Our spring one thousand Peter Street Litter Cleanup uh, was on April twentieth, but we had. Literacy now starting in February all the way to the end of May, forty-six miles roadside clean of litter, over a hundred and eighty people participated. Uh, seventy of those volunteers cleaned fifteen miles of road just on April twentieth. Uh, we've received oh, two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in sponsorships for our personal recreation events for uh, twenty twenty-four, and that is the list of our sponsors, and we thank it very much for their support. Uh, for litter beautification, we also had uh, two new roads adopted, we'll learn about that later, there have been uh, thirty-three pavilion rentals given here to date in our two pavilions that I go back and support. Uh, forty-one vouchers have been issued, two tons of forgiveness for Dan's very pool here to date. Uh, our fifteenth planters were planted uh, in mid-May, and our home two oh nine, then our whole game very healthy. Um, and we also, we also received three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from one for a one percent for Asia, actually, I think there's no percent anymore, I think it's just one for Asia now. Uh, to install new signage uh, at Western Falls Scout Reservation in the public access areas. Uh, so uh, this is for the brands, there the project is to install new signage in the parking area and along the trails of the public access uh. At Western Falls Scout Reservation, the public access includes the area around the parking lot, uh, waterfall, and some trails on the property, there's a map. Uh, to the left that designates the public access area. Uh, we have seventeen annual extravaganza, so there we are with uh, some of our volunteers, some of our participants, and our Mr. Bonnie. Uh, like I said, we've had thirty-three total rentals so far here to date for our two pavilions, forty-one pool docks would have been uh, given out. To residents, which is the most we've started the adoption program in twenty twenty, and we have our three uh, upcoming events for the rest of the year, Community Day, Trump Retreat, and Tree Lightning.
That's a lot of pool vouchers. Well, we're grateful for that, now Middle Smithfield doesn't have to build a pool.
Much better to have, much better to let them use someone else's. Very much.
I would guess, well, Mark, you could tell me, I I would guess that every parent feels the same way you do, feel it's much better to. Have somebody else, use somebody else's.
Right, go use someone else's, well, go build your own. Uh, speaking of events, our community day is this Saturday, July thirteenth from noon until three P M. Uh, the weather was looking a little iffy, but I, the current forecast shows that rain will be done by early to mid morning, so we are on for Saturday. As scheduled, uh, we have our touch truck, are all of our local organizations for our volunteer fair as well as our food vendors, so please come out and join us, it will be a good time.
Now, I know you know these numbers off the top of your head, how many uh, vendors do you have this?
Three.
That's a lot, that's the most you've ever had. Right, and how many food trucks?
Two, uh, Bushkill, uh, Fire Company Auxiliary is bringing their food trailer and uh, energy eminades, which is pictured there from last year, will be there as well.
Well, it sounds like a great time.
Uh, for our letter of beautification, we have our very successful thousand Peter Street, uh, like I said, two new roads have been adopted and our planters are out, so that's the picture from. April twentieth, all of our volunteers who, well, actually not all of our volunteers who participated that day, that's about half the volunteers that participated that day. Uh, not everyone came to this building uh, that morning, some people just went to their areas to clean up, and on the right is one of our planters out on two oh nine, growing very, very well. Uh, we're undertaking people volunteering this spring for about the Peter Street, they collected, I have a quote that they collected three hundred bags, I think it's actually more than that. Um, they cleaned up forty-six miles of roadside, which is twenty-three miles of both sides, uh, so thank you for our volunteers and for Public Works Department who provided safety for our volunteers and collected all the bags. Um, tw- uh, April twentieth, twenty twenty-four was our best attended single day of cleanup event we've ever had. Uh, this map is the map of the township where blue roads are township over roads that are currently adopted. Uh, pink roads are township over roads that are currently available for adoption, as you can see, there's much, much more blue than there is pink, which is great. Uh, and this map of the township, uh, anything highlighted in green are roads that were cleaned at some point this spring. Um, so that's a lot of the township's roads, um, as well as some of Pendot's roads. Uh, the two new roads that were uh, adopted so far this year were reservoir road by the Greater Pocono Section of the N C N W. As well as Sellersville Drive, which was adopted by Wawa, uh, and they open up a road now with Pocono Cafe. Uh, so the between the two businesses, because that that is an area that is a long layer, so uh, the two businesses working together should be able to keep it clear.
And a fun fact is that the uh, Greater Pocono, uh, N C N W is Dr. Marilyn Brown, who's one of the. Person of the Year Finanz, that's her group, and Sellersville, uh, Wawa just adopted it for who's it was.
Pocono Cafe.
And they are.
Uh, they're one of our uh, brothers who are.
Yay. So. It all works together.
Uh, I don't think I know what this is.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, that was one of the ones that.
You know, did you want?
So, yeah, 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 so it just ties into the other, to Bonnie's slide that talked about the Tidy Town Visitors Bureau's grant and then. James's slide, which talked about the streetscaping, which is helpful to uh, promote economic development as well as revitalizing two oh nine, so now it's also. In Chris's because um. As far as litter and beautification goes, one of the things that we were trying to do, the the township match would be the the labor for it, and. One of the things the township is trying to do, um, is we are currently working with Street to Feet. Monroe County Waste Authority and the Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau, um, we, there was a meeting, I guess about a month ago or so at the county about homeless encampments and how they. Are on the rise and what we should be doing with them in Monroe County, so what we we thought we'd reach out to um, these folks. Street to Feet, ha- in a nutshell, Street to Feet has the staff, they have the homeless clients that they pick up. And uh, actually, the Waste Authority picks them up, they have the van and the driver is the safety officer, so they pick up like six or seven people. They go to an area and they clean it up, it's the Pocono three C program. Uh, the Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau is just fine with this operating outside of Pocono three C. So Street to Feet could supply the staff, the Waste Authority would supply the van and the driver, driver and officer, and Christopher would supply the. This is the street you need to work on, um, and they would go do it, um, the cost is comparable to hiring a seasonal. Um, and you'd be uh, you'd be satisfying a number of needs all at once. Um and you'd be uh you'd be satisfying a number of needs all at once, you'd be helping the homeless people. Support themselves and solving the homeless encampment problem as well as getting their street clean. So I thought this is a good place to put it because Christopher runs the litter and beautification program, so it, so now the three of you have. This slide in there, so thank you for indulging, Christopher.
Uh this is just a list of all of the names uh of individuals and families, organizations and businesses that volunteered their time to clean up litter this spring of twenty twenty-four, we thank all of them.
Then you can see a lot of familiar names on this list. So, thank you, Chris. Okay, so that brings us, believe it or not. To uh the conclusion of this, we're happy to answer any questions, I don't know if there's anyone left on Zoom. Or not, but um get involved, invest in the community, we want to encourage business growth. And continue servant leadership, so here are some opportunities here and some things that could use help. Does anyone have any comments or questions? I don't know if there's any public that's online, nobody's online, okay, so I wanted to thank the staff for all your hard work. Uh I mean, in order to produce the presentation, you have to actually do the things, so. It's like in order to make, you know, it's fun to make lists, but eventually you have to do the things on the list. So in this case, it's the reverse, you guys did the work and now you're you're presenting it, so that's why there's such a a good presentation, so thank you very much for all of your hard work. You should be proud of yourselves, I can't wait to see what we do the next six months. All right, so I will stop sharing this screen. Would you all like to get up and take a bow? Now? Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so that brings us to the rest of this meeting now. Solicitors report.
No court, but sure, so um the capable franchise ordinance is under my report agenda item. Uh there is a draft ordinance, uh my understanding is. We're gonna be advertising it for your next meeting for consideration and adoption. Uh we haven't sent it to the paper for advertisement yet because uh Supervisor Dwyer made some. Comments at the last meeting and some questions, I followed up with an email with uh some sites to the existing capable franchise agreement, I don't know if there's any more discussion on that, is everyone. Do we want to go into the substance of the capable franchise, or do we want to stick with what is proposed right now, which would simply be. Renewing it for another eight years. Uh and removing the franchise fee, uh with the ability of the township to reestablish the franchise fee at some point in the future if we deem it appropriate. Or do we want to stay the course in that direction, or do we want to go more substantive with respect to the agreement?
I'm in favor of going forward as we have been. Mark?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, would you like to discuss this more at the workshop on Friday?
Yeah, I guess it's not making any difference now.
So, I just need to know, we need to get this in the paper to the advertiser of July twenty fifth meeting. Um I forget the deadline for the, but tomorrow, I don't think, I guess what I'm saying is tomorrow if we'll discuss it and wait.
Right.
That's okay, but probably early next week, we want to get it in.
There's two of us here and the person who had the comments is not here, so that that's why I thought it would, we could discuss it at tomorrow's. Um supervisor workshop and then, I mean, we could make a motion saying if there's.
What I would suggest, what what I would suggest is that authorize Michelle and I to send out the advertisement. To advertise the public hearing and the adoption of the ordinance for the July twenty fifth meeting. Um early next week, likely Monday, unless something is decided or we're given a different direction at the work, from the work session tomorrow.
So moved.
Okay.
So, so moved, a second, comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
The one other I, piece to that, that kind of goes hand in hand, we discussed la- at the last meeting, in my discussions with. Uh Blue Ridge that the franchise fee would be removed September one. Uh following up with a conversation with an ad, it looked like the township was trying to get it sooner than that, and I did get an email from him saying they could probably do August one.
Okay, uh would they be able to refund everybody July?
It'll be August, it looks like August one will be the implementation, implementation date of the removal of the franchise. So, he sent me an email, he. I'm hoping that's the date, that's the day I'm gonna put the ordinance, that's the date it'll be in the renewal, um. Absent anything unforeseen on my end, um.
So they will collect the tax. They'll give it.
It's an assessment. Well, it's a franchise fee.
They'll collect the franchise fee, they will send it to the township, what if we said we didn't want it and send it back?
I will tell you, you can do what you want, but that's gonna comp, it it's it's gonna be a nightmare trying to figure that out.
Maybe Bonnie can send everybody seven dollar checks. For the month of July, for all the mistake it coming.
We're not gonna have, we talked about for three years.
People aren't doing that, just. I just pick that date and we're down with it, there's only five minutes. Yeah, I don't have any ordinance treaties, or if if ordinance.
The ordinance doesn't talk about anything other than the fact that we're we're renewing the existing capable franchise agreement with. A new eight-year extension timeframe, and the only change is that the franchise fee is being taken out.
Oh, so then then you're fine. I I I'm not. Well, we told everybody it expired in June and we expected the fee to go away in June, and now people are calling saying, I have this magazine here that says. You know, and um. That's why I was hoping that Blue Ridge could just refund the money that they are not using.
Well, that's that, the ordinance would be on Lumberton, it wouldn't be on us.
Right.
If our agreement is to end that Q two, that's converted. Then I can direct those calls back to Blue Ridge or Pennsyl Avenue, saying, hey, you're refunding five dollars and thirty cents for the fee. That's, that'll just be one of the eight mine. And the township, just. My path, we'll get certain, we fulfill our obligation.
They call you by just something on the paper, which that.
We're not advising any of Blue Ridge.
Well, going says. Probably get a mind for the five dollars. We're just passing it on that anyway, we're like.
So my understanding is the the motion that passed was to authorize Michelle or I to advertise the ordinance for adoption for your July.
Yes.
And we're gonna hold on the advertisement until at least Monday, so you can discuss it at your work session tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
I think that's the only thing.
Then we can call you from there too, if there's any questions.
And that was the only thing on my report on the agenda, but if there's anything else, uh no, otherwise I probably have some comments, some some additional items later on.
I don't want to do it, it's important.
There's no interview report, we've done old business, that brings us to new business. Which is the resolution to authorize the um signing of the papers to sell the country club of the programs. So I would make a motion to adopt Resolution zero seven, twenty twenty four dash one.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Mark, do you have a?
Resolution zero seven, twenty twenty four dash two, join your deed and resolution for Maria Espinogan, that is up in Monroe Lake.
All second, any comments or questions? All in favor? You can see there's somebody on Zoom.
A rental fee waiver request.
Oh, yeah, this is from Chris, yeah, East Gastro High School.
Take a motion.
Second, comments or questions? All in favor? And then we had Mount Nevo Apartments, um at the, I think it was May twenty-third meeting. We said that um we made a motion and said that if they gave us a corporate guarantee. Um that we would release their letter of credit, so in the board's packet is the letter that was uh. Sent to us regarding that. On that developer. And no, it's not on the bill, so. So I don't know if there's any discussion on that. Okay, moving on, um letter E, seasonal employment, there's.
Can you make a motion to sign that her to authorize that, that because I have to leave these on with the credit now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that's, because I wasn't at that meeting, but Donna, you got this, now authorized.
I'll make a motion for the uh township secretary to release the letter of credit. Comments or questions? All in favor? Bye.
It just very new thing, we did upon that. So everyone understands a letter of credit is much more easy to enforce than a corporate guarantee. My understanding, based on the prior conversation, is the remaining improvements are necessarily public improvements and and the township is okay, accepting this corporate guarantee, place a little letter of credit to that.
Yeah, be uh because the next phase is gonna incorporate many of these, um we're we're gonna see these same improvements again. Well, there's a second fight maybe after. Um okay, seasonal employment, I don't have anything.
Let me forget to do, so Pablo Rivera starts on Monday, is part of the Tidy Town Grant, he's some full-time help. Doesn't have any working in public, so. Direction between that and her thing, Chris Turner.
Okay, so his job is litter pickup and um. And it's for the rest of July, August and. What is it, his employment come through? I think it's, I think it was September, mid September. Okay, so. Then I would make the motion to hire one seasonal employee. Full-time seasonal, no benefits for litter pickup and landscaping, hardscaping from now through. The start, when's he supposed to start in London, so that with the start date of July fifteen. For some reason, two, three. Four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, for some reason. I thought it was supposed to be fourteen weeks, which will go through the end of September, so so let's sell reasonable.
At most.
Excuse me?
Just make the motion at most.
At most, right? The fourteen weeks at at most. So a motion, is there a second?
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, is there any public comment? Anybody? Did I hear you make a motion to adjourn? Okay, awesome, all in favor? Thank you so much for coming.
I'm gonna make a motion to delay the opening of the office till nine AM just. But I don't think, I don't think Michelle is gonna allow it to hit the floor.
I tri-